Y'all ready? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to our meeting tonight. It doesn't seem like it's late because it's so light outdoors and warm. So I'm going to welcome you to our cool chambers here. We'll call it to order, and our city clerk, Marcy Killian, will do our roll call.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
We're going to have our pledge of allegiance and our invocation by Fran Jensen. It was a member of the Vista Women's Club. So, you want to come up and then remain standing for the invocation, please.
Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Keep us, oh God, from pettiness. Let us be large in thought, in word, in deed. Let us be done with fault-finding and leave off self-seeking. May we put away all pretense and meet each other face to face without self-pity and without prejudice. May we never be hasty in judgment and always generous. Let us take time for all things and to grow calm, serene, gentle. Teach us to put into action our better impulse, straightforward and unafraid. Grant that we may realize that it is the little things that create differences, that in the big things of life we are at one. And may we strive to touch and to know the great common human heart of us all. And, oh Lord God, let us not forget to be kind. Amen.
Thank you. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing is the approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two items we'd like to pull off the agenda this evening. The first is C9, which is the agreement with Vista Irrigation District to construct a water line. And the second item is Item D4, Discussion, and that is the Disability Access Icon. Thank you.
Okay. We did not have a closed session today, so we don't have a report from that. And I have actually three proclamations here to give today, so I'll come down and do that. Okay. The first one is going to be accepted by, oh, I don't have, is it Chuck Chris going to do that? First one? First, Chuck. It's American Public Works Association. It's American Public Works Week, actually, so can you view the proclamation? Okay. And let me read it here, and then you can say something. You can, okay. Okay. Whereas since 1960, the American Public Works Association has sponsored the National Public Works Week to energize and educate the public on the importance of the contribution of public works to their daily lives, planning, building, managing, and operating the heart of our local communities and building the quality of life. Public works' infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of our citizens of Vista. Whereas this year's National Public Works Week theme, Building for Today and Planning for Tomorrow, represents the stewardship embodied by the profession of public works and the professionals that practice it, focusing on communities, building points out of the day-to-day aspect of public works that is the quality of life while planning references the sustainable practices that ensure the quality of life for future generations. And whereas it is in the best interest of civic leaders and Vista citizens to gain knowledge and maintain an understanding of public works' efforts, programs, and successes, whereas the Vista Public Works Department adheres to the highest professional standards to ensure the best for the citizens of Vista, including responsibility for such services as road, sewer, storm drain, and park maintenance, tree trimming, graffiti removal, traffic signal, and streetlight maintenance, maintenance of the municipal facilities, and solid waste and household hazardous waste collection. What's that? Tongue twister. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of Vista's public infrastructure can be attributed to the determination and skills of our public works' professionals, this year marks the 50th anniversary of the adoption of Resolution 64-17 authorizing the creation of a street department to be combined with the existing City of Vista Public Works Department. So now, therefore, the mayor's and the members of our city council do hereby proclaim the week of May 18, 2014, to May 24, 2014, as Public Works Week in the City of Vista. So I'm going to turn this over to Chuck Chris, and he can introduce these guys and he has something to say.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor and Council, for this recognition. We really appreciate it. We count ourselves very fortunate to be serving the community of Vista, and it's a true honor to do so. With me this evening are just a few of our managers who could make it. To my right, first of all, is Lynn Dedman, our management analyst, and Mickey Romero, our operations manager for Contract Administration. On behalf of the 58 employees in the Public Works Department, we're very thankful for this honor, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We all appreciate you guys. You do a great job for our city. This next proclamation is, the proclamation of May is National Bike to Work Month, and Friday, May 16, 2014, is National Bike to Work Day. Whereas National Bike to Work Month 2014 promotes bicycle commuting, safety, and driver awareness of bicycle riders. And whereas San Diego is sponsoring National Bike to Work Month and Bike to Work Day to recognize biking to work and to promote employer, whoops, can't get this next page here, to promote employer and commuter participation in May and throughout the year. Whereas biking is a proven emissions-free transportation alternative that reduces traffic congestion, improves mobility, and provides an alternative to driving alone, San Diego area employers can improve mobility and reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the region and around their work sites by offering incentives to employees to encourage bicycling to work and other alternatives to the solo commute. Whereas San Diego area commuters can reduce their weekly solo commute trips and the demands placed on the region's roadways by 20% by choosing a commute alternative like biking to work just once a week. So now, therefore, the mayor and members of our Vista City Council encourage employers to offer incentives to employees to use alternatives to driving alone, such as biking to work for this day and throughout the year, and do hereby proclaim May 2014 National Bike to Work Month and Friday, May 16, as National Bike to Work Day in the City of Vista. So lots of bikes out there riding around. And I was going to present this to...
You can accept it.
Oh, to me? To myself? Okay. So I would invite you all to join the thousands of bike riders throughout San Diego County this coming Friday, May 16, for Bike to Work Day. All this month, you can log your bike trips on the San Diego website to be entered into a prize drawing. The website is icommutesd.com, or you can find the link on our city website, cityofvista.com. So I'd like to, as I drive around, as I drive around, not riding my bike, I will look for you guys riding your bikes. And the last one here is, I'm going to present this to who? Okay. Here's your proclamation. I'm going to read one more here. Okay. Whereas the month of May is National Building Safety Month. Whereas Building Safety Month in 2014 is sponsored by the International Code Council with a theme of building safety, maximizing resistance, and minimizing risks. This theme encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, backyard safety, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry. And whereas Building Safety Month 2014 emphasizes appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. Whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of our local building and fire prevention staff, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. Whereas these guardians use a governmental consensus process that brings together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the building industry to create and implement codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. These codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wild land fires, and earthquakes. Whereas our city's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and resilience in the structural environment that affects our citizens give us confidence that our facilities are safe and sound. So now, therefore, the mayor and members of the city council, the Vista City Council, encourages citizens to join in the activities that will increase awareness of building safety, and hereby proclaims the month of May 2014 as National Building Safety Month in the City of Vista. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. Mayor, I want to mention, as you know, this is Al Raymond, but for those in the audience that may not know him, Al Raymond is our building official and has been somewhat of a recent addition to the city team in the last six months. And so for those that aren't familiar with him, this is Al Raymond.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. And I just really want to invite you all to view the display, the Building Safety Month display in the lobby. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. With that, we now have a presentation promoting tap water by Ray, is it?
Roy.
Roy. Sorry, Roy. Is it Cooks? Cooks? Ray Cooks, general manager of the Vista Irrigation District.
Good evening. I'm Roy Cooks. I'm the general manager of the Vista Irrigation District, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. As you know, with the, well, the Vista Irrigation District has been proudly providing drinking water to the community of Vista and surrounding communities since 1923. As you know, with the hot weather and the drought, the value of water becomes more critical. And I just want to say that with the drought on everyone's minds, that Vistans and really the region as a whole has done a tremendous job of conserving to the point where we've were using 20% less water than we did in the last drought in 2008. So as such, we're hopeful that this will carry us through the current drought. But that's not the reason I'm here today. I'd like to present you with a little different message. We are very proud of the product that we produce and feel it's a tremendous value. There have been a lot of efforts to try to promote tap water, especially in contrast to bottled water, which is becoming much more in favor these days. Let me see if I can turn it on on the side. Okay. No. This side? Okay. Pardon me. We'll get there. Okay, great. As way of background, just to let you know that bottled water, someone came up with the idea of putting water in bottles back in about the 1970s, and it's taken off since then and become a consumer staple, really since about the 1990s. And as sales of bottled water have taken off, and with campaigns and advertising and marketing with pictures of glaciers, mountain springs, the message has been conveyed that bottled water is better for you, and as a result, consumer trust in tap water has been damaged. According to a survey, a nationwide survey by the Natural Resources Defense Council, Americans drink bottled water for the following reasons: health and safety, taste, and convenience. So I'm here to really talk to you about really some of the myths we think that are being perpetrated as it relates to bottled water. The first myth is that bottled water is healthier and safer than tap water, and I'm here to tell you that is not the case. Bottled water is certainly not cleaner or safer. Our industry is regulated and has to meet many stringent tests. We sample constantly. Our people must be certified, and so as such, we're put through much more rigorous testing for our water. The second myth is that bottled water is more pure somehow than tap water, but the reality is that most bottled waters these days are actually tap water that is being put through some type of a filter or process. And so there's really a campaign to try to get these bottled water companies to disclose the source of their water, and you'll find more and more that there will be labels which say the words "public water source," "it comes from municipal water source" on its label. There's a myth that bottled water tastes better than tap water. This is probably the hardest one to address for us because taste is such a subjective criterion, but studies have shown that when people do blind test side by side between bottled water and tap water and kind of level the playing field, a lot of times you've put your bottled water in your refrigerator, and you compare the taste to tap water that comes out of your tap, which may be warm. So we encourage you to put them in similar containers, put them in the refrigerator for the same length of time, and then try them side by side to see if you can tell the difference. And a lot of people cannot. And if you can, and people certainly have individual preferences, you can get some of these inexpensive faucet-end filters that you can buy in the store for just a few dollars, and that will achieve the same result as the spending a lot more to buy your water in bottles. The final myth is that bottled water is more convenient than tap water. Well, I think for a while that might have been true. I know that when my sons were young, my wife used to buy the big cases of bottled water because it was so portable, very convenient to take it to their sporting events. Well, we're trying to get around that by promoting the use of refillable water bottles that you can take with you and take around to places to make it convenient to fill with tap water. So as such, if we can address the portability, I think that will really alleviate this myth in terms of the convenience issue. I also wanted to just mention that as part of the survey that was taken, in addition to the previous factors I mentioned of health and safety, taste, and convenience, they found that for minority Americans, and primarily, they were talking to the Latino population, which obviously is a very large growing segment of our community, another factor that they said was really the fear factor. And it really has to do with the fact that for cultural reasons or for things like that, a lot of minorities do not trust the tap water, and they will not drink tap water. They feel it's not safe. This campaign really began when I was driving through Vista several times, and I would see elderly ladies carrying jugs full of water. They had carried them to the grocery store to fill them up with those vending machines in front of the grocery store, and then they would carry them back home with them. And a lot of these were elderly Latino ladies, and I would speak with some of my Latino friends, who'd say, yes, I have relatives, I have parents who, I can't convince them to drink the tap water. So then I knew that there was really an education campaign, I think, that was begging to be had in Vista. And as I mentioned, these water vending machines are kind of a middle ground. They're not the single-use water bottles you see, but they are placed in front of grocery stores. They tend to be in a lot of minority neighborhoods where you have to bring your own container, you fill them up with water, and if you look behind them, you can see they're just hooked into the municipal source. So it's just tap water coming from, it's VID water coming through the machine. And those, by the way, cost 75 times as much as tap water. I'll get into that in a minute. So we came up with a campaign that we branded Love Tap, and I've given you some of our water bottles that we're trying to utilize as a method to spread the word, if you will. And so we have an outreach campaign. So the different components, again, the first one is we want you to tap into health. So in other words, we encourage you to drink tap water for health reasons, getting away from the sodas and the sugary drinks. That's the first step, is to get away from that. There's, our message that we were trying to get out in terms of the safety of the water has been reinforced by some of these national campaigns which are going on now to our benefit. And one, you've probably seen Michelle Obama. She's heavy into the school nutrition, anti-childhood obesity campaigns, and she's trying to convince especially children to stop drinking sodas and sugary drinks and start drinking water. The next step is for us to convince her to tell people to drink tap water. So we're trying to reinforce that message. The second reason to drink tap water is economical. It's really tapping into the savings, just in terms of, regardless of how we might feel about taste or the purity of bottled water, I think all of us agree that everybody wants to save money. So if you can save the money, you can see that just in comparison, depending on the brand and the quantities of bottled water you use, it can be hundreds to 10,000 times more expensive. Just as an example, if you drink the recommended eight glasses of, eight ounce glasses of water a day, as recommended by the Surgeon General, I think it is, VID tap water will cost you 60 cents a year to drink that much water. If you go out and buy bottled water, it could cost you well over $1,000 a year. Now, tap into green or the environment. The other issue that's taken off nationwide is the campaign against the plastic bottle waste in our landfills. You can see that essentially 1.5 million barrels of oil are used to make plastic water bottles, so they're not environmentally sustainable. It's not counted the oil used to transport them around. Americans throw away 38 billion water bottles a year, and that plastic is filling our landfills and taking over 1,000 years to biodegrade in our landfills. The city of, well, this campaign has taken off on university campuses pretty much, where a lot of university campuses have banned the sale of bottled water on campuses, and the city of San Francisco became the first major city two months ago to ban the sale, distribution of water, plastic water bottles on city property. So basically, we're just encouraging people to drink tap water for the reasons that I mentioned: safety, reliability, cost, environmental sustainability. This is for our younger audiences. We're trying to go out into schools and try to convince our young people that tap water is safe and tasty to drink, so be a water superhero. We're encouraging everybody to love tap. And specifically, what we're trying to do is to install what are called hydration stations or their water bottle filling stations. You might have seen them. The airports have them now. We've put one in our lobby, so if you'd like to come over and take a look and refill your Love Tap water bottle, please do so. We've, I've met with your city managers, been very supportive, and we're trying to work on a program where the Vista Irrigation District will provide funding to put some hydration stations out into your public facilities as a pilot program, rec centers, or sports fields, things like that. And we feel that they'll be so well-received that we can work with you in the future to get many more of these out there. And in terms of the business community, the Santa Clara County just last week announced that they're considering passing an ordinance which would require hydration stations in all commercial buildings in Santa Clara County. And that's what hydration stations look like. There's their versions that go indoors, there are their standalone ones that go outdoors, and make it very convenient, easy to refill your environmentally sustainable water bottles with tap water. So in conclusion, just like people to remember these points that, like when I first started out and wanting to make sure our customers knew this, that you drink bottled water because you want to, not because you think you have to. Tap water is safe to drink. If you chill or filter the water, compare the taste, and aren't all these things worth trying in order to save over $1,000 every year? We're also excited about, we're going to be out at the Vista Strawberry Festival. We've been working with the Chamber, so we're going to have a booth which includes a portable hydration station, and we'll be passing out some water bottles there and trying to spread the message. We've also arranged for a band that started in San Diego. It's now located in the Pacific Northwest, and they're called Tap Water. And so as such, they're into the environmental sustainability. So we really are looking forward to anticipate a great concert out there at 2:00 on May 25. So please, please come out. There's the band. So basically, I'm here to encourage you to come out and see us at the Strawberry Festival, but also to encourage you to continue to support our campaign as we move forward and in partnership with you. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? We appreciate that, and we will work on loving our tap water.
Please do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For your presentation. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar would be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So the next thing is our consent calendar, and I need to know if anybody wants anything pulled off.
I would like to have C4 and C11.
C18.
Any other ones from anybody? If not, I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I make a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay. Who's Amanda Lee?
May the city clerk note my no vote on item C14.
Okay. Amanda Lee is, do you want to say something? I always have you on my, have you on my screen as I'm going to speak. No? Okay, we'll clear you off. There. Okay. Okay. Everybody, please cast your votes on the balance of the consent calendar. Oh, you're waiting for me? Oh, okay. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next thing will be our item C4, the engineer reports and assessments for the fiscal year 2014-15.
Would you like a report, or do you just have questions?
Do you like a report or questions?
I just have a question. I don't know if you want the report for the benefit of the audience. Well, let's go ahead and do the report.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the Director in Finance and City Treasurer for the City of Vista. Before you tonight decide on C4, the council will take action to accept the engineers' reports as approved for the three assessment districts that we have within the city. We have three assessment districts. One is a citywide 1972 Act district, which helps pay for the street lighting, the traffic signals, and street tree maintenance within the City of Vista. All approximately 20,000 parcels receive an amount on their tax bill annually for that district. The second district that we are addressing tonight is a 1982 Act citywide street maintenance district. Once again, this helps pay for street sweeping and annual maintenance of the streets, and again, all approximately 20,000 parcels receive an assessment for that annually. And the last one is a smaller 1972 Act district that is out in the South Melrose Districts that has approximately 1,100 parcels that help take care of landscape maintenance along South Melrose Drive, slope maintenance, olive trees in that area. All three of these districts are covered by Proposition 218, and therefore, the current level of assessments have basically been frozen since the election of November 1996. If we ever desire to increase the assessments in these districts, we would have to have a Proposition 218 vote where we would send ballots to each of the individual property owners, and they would have to vote, or we would have to not get more than a 50% protest vote, if you will, to increase those assessments. That completes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Rigby.
I just have two questions, just for clarification.
I just have two questions, just for clarification. On the Street Maintenance District 1, you said that that's citywide for all households.
Correct.
Okay. And for street sweeping, and it says here in the staff report, Zone 1 has no street sweeping.
Correct.
Zone 2, street sweeping for two days per month. Zone 3, sweeping for four days per month. And Zone 4 is street sweeping for eight days per month.
Yes.
I was wondering about the zone that they get street sweeping just one day per month.
I'm not aware of any areas where we only have street sweeping one day a month.
So do you have a specific address or area?
Mine? We only get street sweeping the last Friday of every month, so I was wondering, which one of these categories does my house fit into?
I would have to get-
Or that neighborhood.
I would have to get your parcel number and look into that. I mean, the no street sweeping, those are the streets that, in the city, that don't have any curb and gutter, but as far as I was aware of, and maybe someone here from our Public Works Department can-
Okay.
...address the issue. But as far as I know, the minimum is two.
Yeah, we can take a look at that-
Double check that.
-and determine whether you're at the 372 rate or not, but yeah, I would guess that you're at the 372 rate for street sweeping.
Okay. And then the other question goes down to South Melrose Landscape District, and you have the five zones laid out here.
Yes.
And each one says that the maximum currently allowed under Prop 218 is being partially suspended for the 2014-15 year only, and that the rate to be used for this 2014-15 year is X, and then it will go back up to the regular amount or the amount that it had been assessed at for the last few years.
Correct.
Why will it go up automatically if these numbers are based on the costs?
Well, that's the issue exactly. I think we've had this wording for these zones for the last, maybe three, and this might be the fourth year, where we had some reserves that had built up in that district, and therefore, we lowered the assessment rate to burn off some of that excess reserve to get it back down to a reasonable level. And we basically have that wording in there to preserve our rights, for lack of a better term, because of the Prop 218 implications.
Okay. I just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
No.
I have one. Why do some streets need to be swept only two days a month, and some four days, and some eight days? What's it, is it traffic, by the traffic generated?
I think it has a lot to do with the traffic flow and what might be going on in that street, you know, residential area versus a business area where there's trucks going, and, you know, it's, a lot of it is tied directly into storm drain issues. We don't want debris accumulating on our streets and ending up in the storm drains.
That makes sense. That makes sense. Okay, so then I would say I need a motion to approve this.
I'll make the motion that we approve the engineering report and declare the intent to levy and collect assessments.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Our next one would be C11. Okay, C11.
And is a report needed for this item?
I just have a quick question on it.
Okay.
This is the one regarding the vacation of public streets and service easements, and I know the answer to this one. I actually knew the answer to that one, but I've gotten questions when the agenda went out, so I wanted just clarification for the public. And the question on this one was regarding the $4,705 application fee that a property owner would have to pay in order to get the easement vacated. Can you explain to everyone where that money goes and what's the purpose of that fee? Please?
Sure. The application fee pays for the staff time needed to process the application, so in a typical easement or vacation process, the applicant has to provide an engineered drawing that shows the extent of the easement, where it's located, you know, what frontage is there, or what area the easement covers. The staff's responsible for reviewing that document. It goes to the Planning Department to make sure there's no conflicts with the zoning and the general plan. It goes back through engineering design review, and then it goes to the city engineer, or in certain cases, the council for approval. So that $4,700 was established in, I think, 2002, the last time we did a fee survey, to determine how much staff time is involved in a typical application for a street vacation.
Are there any fees associated with having to record those maps and documents with the county?
The county requires the fees for recordation, but the city does not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions regarding that? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Please cast your votes on that item. Okay, that one passes unanimously. Our next one is, I believe it's C18. Would you like a report, Cody?
Yeah, let's hear it.
Would you like a report?
Yep.
Okay, would you like a report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ally Zimmer, Assistant City Manager. With me tonight is Management Analyst Cheryl Masch. She'll provide you with the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The California State Assembly approved Assemblymember Gomez's House Resolution 29 on April 3rd. H.R. 29 opposes public services outsourcing by declaring that it harms transparency, accountability, and competition. The city of Vista delivers most services utilizing city employees. However, outsourcing is employed when deemed a more cost-effective method of delivering services. A few examples of contracted services include park landscape maintenance, refuse collection, and tree trimming, in addition to Vista's law enforcement safety services provided by the San Diego County Sheriff's Department. Opposition to H.R. 29 is authorized under the City Council-approved legislative platform. Normally, staff would prepare a letter for the mayor's signature on an item such as this. However, pursuant to City Council direction at the April 8 meeting, staff has prepared a formal City Council resolution rejecting H.R. 29. If approved, the resolution will be forwarded to Assemblymember Gomez with copies to Vista's representatives. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Did you want to say something, Councilmember?
I did. You know, one of the issues that I have with the opposition to this particular resolution, A, it's not a bill, it's just an assembly resolution, but I think there's some merit on both sides on this issue, from my council colleagues' perspective, sort of blanket opposition to it, and the fact that if you look at some of the points in this resolution from the Assembly, I think there are some points that merit looking at here in the city of Vista. Some of those concerns that I have for some of the services that we outsource include our janitorial services, our part maintenance services, and the average hourly wage that we actually wind up having those hardworking individuals be paid. And I'm concerned about that, and one of the things that I would actually request is that staff comes back to the council, or provides it to me separately, an hourly breakdown of what outsourced employees of those companies make, providing services here in the city. I actually oppose this particular resolution against the Assembly resolution, and will be writing a letter of support in favor of this individually.
I'm not seeing anybody's names pop up on here. Are people pushing?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I thought I hit the request to speak. I just wanted to make a comment, if I may.
Am I not seeing it? Okay. Go ahead.
I appreciate Councilwoman Campbell's discussion on what the outsourced companies, the contract companies are paying, and the way that they treat their employees. That's laudable, but the issue here is regarding local control for the government, the city of Vista. And the resolution and their intent to bring it into an amendment or legislative action at Sacramento is an issue of local control and trying to take away the ability of the city to best manage city funds and city services. And in every aspect that we do contract out, we try to get the best, highest quality service and goods that we can at the best price available in the marketplace locally, using local workers when possible and local products when possible. And I think it's important that we continue to maintain the local control. Sacramento and the legislators don't always know what the impact of that legislation is on our community, and we know better for our community than Sacramento does. So I think that's really important. And I think when you look at what the resolution verbiage is, it says that the taxpayers lose transparency and accountability. I disagree with that. You hold us accountable. We have to show you what we're doing, what the contracts are, who they're made to, the terms of the contracts. If we have contractors who are not living up to their agreements, yes, absolutely, hold our feet to the fire, and it's up to us to terminate those contracts and get better services. So I think some of the reasons that they have listed here really, I don't really think that they're appropriate, or, I don't know the right word, they're not relevant to how we do business in Vista. Sad if it is relevant to how other cities do business, but that's not the way we do business. So I see this as an issue of local control, and I think it's important that we let Sacramento know that the cities want to maintain local control. So that's my point, and thank you.
Well said, I agree with you. I have two blank things on the screen here, and I don't know if somebody pushed the button, so maybe raise your hand. Okay. Councilmember calls.
This is a complex issue, and in general, I'm very strongly supportive of public employment for public services and the public work that we do for our city residents. I think that gives us the authority and the direct control over how those services are delivered. However, there are many things that we're required to do as a city that we really can't deploy a full-time staff with the full cost of the deployment of a department, and we just have to issue contracts for sporadic needs or for temporary or part-time services that we need to have done. I think, in my opinion, Vista has done a pretty good job of protecting our public employees to provide the best public services to our residents. And this bill is probably a little too restrictive. I would hope that our council would use and exercise our authority to keep our public employees within our family, and only outsource where it's absolutely necessary, because when a whole division is outsourced, my experience has been that the employees that were doing the work before go to work for another private enterprise, and then they work for less money, less benefits, but at very little reduction in cost to the public employer. So again, I think this bill is probably a little too restrictive to allow for us to maintain our local control, and I would just hope that our council preserve our high-quality public employment system. So I don't support a statewide initiative or resolution to restrict how we run our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Regulaire, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I made a motion earlier, and I was just wondering, does it die now, or?
No, I'll second that motion.
It's hard, because right now, our system isn't working, and so nobody's, oh, they reset it? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, and push the button and see. Oh, yep. It's back. Okay, it's back. I can tell now who's talking. Okay. I'll clear you. Okay. Okay, so please, we have a motion and a second on this issue, so please cast your votes. That motion passes with one no vote. The next thing on our agenda is, are we going to D1? It's our discussion item, our draft fiscal year 2014-15 operating budget. Laura Johnson is going to take that tonight. So welcome, Laura. This is your first presentation, I think.
Oh, gosh, everybody knows now.
Don't be nervous, it's okay. You're gonna do great.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this discussion item is to review the draft operating budget and receive any direction from City Council prior to presenting the final budget on June 10. Staff began preparing the operating budget for fiscal year 2014-15 last fall. Revenue estimates were prepared, and based on available resources, a spending plan has been devised that we feel best meets the needs of the residents and businesses of the city, as well as council goals. The agenda report provided a broad overview of all funds, but especially the general fund. This presentation will begin with a recap of council goals, a review of general fund revenue and expense estimates, and will end with a discussion of the seven major spending categories. On page 7 of the operating budget document, you'll be reminded of the City Council's top priority goals, which were established in March 2014. The goals are fiscal sustainability, public safety, beautification, which includes decreasing blight and improving the image of the city, attracting revenue generating businesses, to continue making road and street improvements, and create more youth sports and recreational These priority goals are being addressed in the current budget and will continue to be addressed in the upcoming year through the operating and capital budgets. The total operating budget is $116,685,842. It is accounted for in almost 20 funds, most of which are restricted by law as to the type of activity for which the money can be spent. As this slide visually illustrates, unrestricted monies, or general fund monies, shown in green, fund the bulk of the city's expenses, including, for example, all of public safety. Restricted monies, or non-general funds, shown in blue, are a major funding source for certain kinds of activities. Most of public works, for example, is funded by non-general funds. The unrestricted general fund monies, however, will be the focus of this presentation. The first area to review will be the general fund revenues and resources. Page 17 of the budget document provides a summary showing historical data as compared to the proposed 2014-15 revenues. All revenues are estimated in detail early in the budget process and are evaluated several times before being approved by the city manager. The general fund revenues are estimated to be $66,234,138. A majority of revenues come from just a few sources. Property taxes at $17.9 million are showing a modest improvement and are estimated to be 3.87% over the most recent 13-14 budget projection. Sales tax at $15.3 million are forecast to be 3.76% over the original 13-14 budget, also an indication of the recovering economy. Charges for services estimated at slightly more than $10 million are for fees paid directly by the party benefiting from the service, such as development permits, ambulance billings, and recreation programs. Franchise fees at $3,600,000 remain relatively stable. Franchise fees are paid by utility providers such as SDG&E, cable companies, and by Edco for waste hauling. The remaining of general fund revenues are made up of a variety of sources, as shown on the slide. One thing you may notice is that intergovernmental revenue is low as compared to prior years. Much of the intergovernmental revenue is related to grants, which are added to the budget when they are approved at a point after the start of the year. Another component of general fund revenues is the Proposition L, 10% sales tax measure, voted approved in November 2006 to fund several large projects, including the construction of the Civic Center and Sports Park. This chart shows the annual accounting of Proposition L sales tax revenues. These revenues typically are in the range of 30% to 32% of total sales taxes. Prop L revenues have been estimated at an annual increase rate of 2%. Prop L revenues have been estimated at an annual increase rate of 2%. If revenues are received at this rate, the city will be able to meet the debt payments through the life of the tax. Anticipated revenue will also be able to cover approximately $1.2 million of fire salaries through at least fiscal year 2019-20. If actual revenues exceed the annual increase rate of 2%, Prop L sales tax may be available to fund fire salaries for a longer period. The last element of revenue that I would like to discuss is the use of reserves. Pages 24 and 25 of the budget shows a use of reserves in the general fund of $1.1 million. These monies are not part of the city's emergency reserves. These monies that were previously set aside and reserved to fund future expenses, such as facility improvements and upkeep, park improvements, and Proposition L debt service. These pages list what reserve is being used and the expense that will be funded. A special note for this year is that there is no longer a structural deficit in the general fund, meaning our resources are adequate to fund expenses for the 2014-15 fiscal year. This is due in part to improvements in the economy, but credit is also due to prudent budgeting by the City Council and city staff. Before we move to a discussion of expenses, this slide shows a comparison of general fund revenues and to expenditures. As you can see, all of the city's sales and property tax categories are needed to fund public safety costs. The next area to review will be estimated expenses. Page 19 of the budget provides a summary showing historical data as compared to the proposed 2014-15 expenses. Staff has been able to keep expenditures in most categories fairly stable from the current fiscal year. This is because individual departments have been very conscientious about operating expenses where the city has discretion. General fund expenditures are projected to be $65,949,456, which includes transfers out to fund subsidies to non-general fund budgets, including $259,113 to the senior nutrition program, $169,047 to the lighting and landscape maintenance district, and $173,318 to the Wave Water Park. At the April 8th budget overview meeting, the council asked staff to review the subsidies for these areas and for cultural arts. As a result of that review, the lighting and landscape maintenance district subsidy was decreased by $15,592. The cultural arts subsidy is now $209,012, a decrease of $30,400 from the overview meeting. We will continue to review the cultural arts budget as ticket sales continue to bring the number under the council guideline of 200,000. Excluding Proposition L funds, the net general fund expenditures total $58,267,430. Compared to the net general fund revenues of $58,552,112, the remaining balance at June 30th of 2015 is estimated to be $284,682. The 2014-15 budget includes several personnel changes to increase revenues to the city, to provide for changes in demand for services, and to facilitate effective transition for upcoming retirements and vacancies. In the general fund, the assistant to the city manager position will be refunded and offset by the deletion of the budget and policy manager. An management analyst for grants writing will be added, and an assistant engineer will be added. The assistant engineer in traffic engineering is offset by the reduction of a $50,000 contract. Also, the finance manager position will be refunded for a portion of the fiscal year. Non-general fund changes include the deletion of a kitchen aid in senior nutrition and the addition of a principal engineer and management analyst in sewer engineering to handle the high level of capital projects pending. The remainder of this presentation will include a more detailed look at expenditures. The budget document is broken out to seven spending categories. The first page of each category includes a list of goals for the coming year. While staff has consistently managed expenditures, there are several areas of nondiscretionary expense that continually increase and erode our progress. These include increases to the annual law enforcement contract, pension costs, healthcare, and minimum wage increases. General government is the first category of expense we will review. The summary of this category can be found on page 67 of the draft budget document. This category includes expenses related to the departments of City Council, city manager, human resources, city clerk, finance, city attorney, non-departmental, and economic development. General government expenses are approximately 12% of the general fund and total $7.1 million. Most of the increase in this category is because economic development activities have been reclassified from the redevelopment and housing category. Economic development is a high priority for the City Council involving business retention, recruitment, and expansion. A summary of the public safety expenses can be found on page 109. This section includes law enforcement, school safety, and fire services. Public safety accounts for approximately 64% of the general fund expenses and totals $37.5 million. It requires all of the city's tax revenue to fund just this area of expense. Public safety is a high priority for the City Council and involves maintaining current levels of fire and law enforcement services. To achieve this priority, staff will continue to work identifying and applying for grants to enhance these services. The summary for community development expenses is on page 151. This category includes code enforcement, engineering, traffic engineering, planning, development services, and land development, are approximately 10% of the general fund expense and total just under $6 million. Non-general fund activities include sewer administration and engineering, as well as storm water, are in this category of spending and total $9.3 million for a combined total of $15.3 million. The summary for the following category of expense, redevelopment and housing, is on page 201 of the budget document. This section includes redevelopment, housing, and community development block grant activities with expenses of $2.9 million from non-general fund monies. One of the major housing projects managed by this budget category is the Paseo Point Project, part of the improvements to the Paseo Santa Fe, which is a high priority for the City Council. Public Works summary can be found on page 223. This category of expense maintains much of the city's infrastructure and makes it an attractive place to be. The category includes administration, graffiti abatement, and park and median maintenance within the general fund. These expenses total $2.7 million, approximately 5% of the general fund. Most of the funding for public works comes from non-general fund sources and provides streets, lighting, and landscape maintenance, as well as maintenance of the storm water and sewer systems. Non-general fund sources total $8.4 million, bringing the public works total to over $11 million. Beautification of the city is another of the City Council's priorities. Public Works manages several areas of effort to meet this challenge, including graffiti abatement, landscaping, and street curb and gutter activities. The summary for the Recreation and Community Services category of spending is on page 277. Expenses in this category total $5.2 million and are approximately 9% of general fund spending. In addition to general administration, Recreation and Community Services activities include recreation programs, the Rancho Adobe, senior services, and cultural arts. Non-general fund expenses for the senior nutrition program and Wave Water Park amount to $2.5 million, bringing the total for this category to $7.7 million. The Recreation and Community Services Department is charged with the council's priority to create more youth sports and recreational opportunities. To do this, the department will continue to evaluate the costs and benefits of current recreation programs and introduce and implement cost-effective recreation activities that are not provided elsewhere in the community. Last, but essential to providing the service mentioned earlier are the internal service budgets. The summary for this spending category can be found on page 315 and includes the support services of risk management, building, facility and fleet maintenance, and information technology. Aptly named, this category provides services which are funded through internal charges to all other components of the organization. This non-general fund spending category totals $2.5 million. This ends the presentation, and I thank you for your attention. It's been my pleasure to represent the staff who have prepared the 2014-15 operating budget. Please let us know if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you. Any comments? Councilmember Aguilera? Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Where should I start? No, I'm just kidding. I have a couple of, I think, just somewhat easy questions that you probably can answer. The subtotals for revenue, going back to that page 17. Let's take a look at it. This just, because I think it would make it easier for people to read this page. And it is one of the pages you referenced. You know how you have the total taxes subtitled there? And then you go down below, and you have license and permits and all those basically intergovernmental fees we charge. Would it be possible to total those and then have a subtotal underneath that? And because, I mean, somebody's looking at this page, they've got to look at $56 million there. Subtract the $37 million on top. Not everybody's carrying around... Well, I guess everybody is carrying around a calculator on their phones today. But I just think it'd be easier to read. I don't know, is that a...
We can absolutely make that change.
Yeah, but, okay. So I think that would be helpful along that whole page.
Okay.
And then the next one, I think I know the answer to this because I do deal a little bit with finance. But the expense page on page 19, is it possible to somehow match up? Like, we have public safety there. You know, and offset, somehow figure out what it costs for public safety versus, let's say, revenue? I know there's not much revenue in any of that. But I mean, if we just went down the road and so that we, almost like a profit and loss, is that something that's done in government?
Profit and loss is usually referred to in the public sector.
I know, yeah.
But we would, I would hope, be able to show some sort of chart that would show the benefits of the programs and the costs involved.
Yeah, because I know in an area that we've all have debated up here in the past, going back to when I first was elected, is parks and rec. You know, and although I know that government isn't a profitable entity, it is helpful to know, you know, where obviously most of the money's going and where most of the revenue is coming from.
I agree.
So I think that would be a helpful thing if you could somehow work that in to the budget. And then...
I might add, the revenue detail is on the following pages, but it doesn't break it out as clean as you're looking for. But it is there to explain, like, what we take in for ambulance fees. So for example, on public safety, look at page 33. It talks about the revenue that we receive for fire-related charges. So ambulance fees, private ambulance permits, fire district reimbursement. But I think what you're looking for is it laid out in steps. So you can see public safety expenditures, what we take in for revenue, and then you know what the offset is. Correct?
Correct, yeah. And more summary, because I mean, I know it's here in the details. I mean, that's the whole idea of the operating budget, right? It's have all the details. But I mean, I think the average citizen probably just wants to look at this on one page or two pages, you know, at most. And then the city manager and I were kind of discussing back and forth the emergency reserves page. It's page 24. Not emergency reserves, I'm sorry, reserves. You quite clearly indicated that these are not emergency reserves. But they, you know, when the public looks at it, initially, they see $1.5 million came out of reserves. Yet, my colleagues and I are out there saying we're out of a structural deficit, so we're not spending reserves. But there's different reserves. The average person, you know, out here, up here, I'm sure, too, we all have one reserve. It's called a savings account, right? So we don't know that people in government have multiple reserve accounts. So I was wondering if there's a different way to name that category? Or is that even possible in government?
Well, you know, the general reserves, it's standard throughout government accounting to have reserves. But in terms of what we consider our emergency reserve fund, on page 340 of the document, you can see that it's entitled Revenue Shortfall. And we can certainly rename that to Emergency Reserve. If somebody's got a more creative name, that's not a problem.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea. Revenue shortfall, sounds like we're in the hole somewhere.
Right, well, yeah, that's kind of alarming to most people.
And it really is emergency reserves.
I mean, I guess it would be alarming if we needed to tap into that, right?
Well, and I think over the past, and this name has changed somewhat, but over the past seven years since the recession, that's what it was. It was Revenue Shortfall, to balance the budget if need be. Fortunately for us, we were using one-time monies to balance the budget. We never had to tap into it, and that would be our hope in the future as well.
And just to clarify for the public, our emergency reserves, or Revenue Shortfall reserves, whatever we plan to name it, has actually increased over the last several years during the recession? Has actually gone up then?
That's correct. It went from 10% back in the mid 2000s, and now it's at 15% for a total of $8.55 million.
Okay. And just for the record, I would like to see that increase beyond the 20 that I think we've discussed.
I agree.
And continue to go up.
That's part of council policy as well, to get that to 20%. And once we're successful in doing that...
We can discuss more, right?
Make that change.
Baby steps. And then my last question, actually, I have two. Second to last question, the sewer administration fee, is that the fee we pay to... Or it just says sewer administration. It's on page 151. Is that the fee we pay to Encina? There's one for Buena and one for Vista Sewer. It's six and a half million?
That is the overall cost for sewer administration to run the admin side of the sewer program. Part of that fee is the Encina fee built into it. And Laura, I don't know if you offhand know what the Encina charge is.
I don't remember offhand.
It's above $2 million.
It's a big number.
$2 million?
It's higher than $2 million. I know that for sure.
But is that just for Buena, or is that for Vista Sewer?
That's just for Vista Sewer.
Okay. So where would I find that?
Let me look it up for you.
Here we go. That's us. I want to know what we're paying to Encina.
Yeah. That wouldn't be in a public works. What would that be under?
Sewer administration?
It's on page 179. And there's a line item for everything in the budget. It appears that the amount paid to Encina...
It appears that the amount paid to Encina is around $3.5 million.
So for the pollution control facility in particular, which is just that charge without the pump stations and the environmental source charges, it's 2.5 million?
2.5, right there.
Encina charge, yeah.
Okay, perfect. And then, the last question, it has to do with risk management. I apologize, I don't remember what page it's on, but the charge was 6.7 for administration, kind of a similar question. Is that for the department, or was that money set aside for risk management?
The risk management page is 317. Risk management has many components to it, most of which are in the program statement, but they handle insurance programs, tort cases, employee group insurance, life insurance, property insurance, bonding, physical examinations for employees, special health programs, and the management of several licensings.
And of that 6.7 million, just between workers' comp as well as benefits for the workforce, that adds up to about $5 million, and then the rest makes up the 1.7 million.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what our administration actual cost was. I figured it was insurance and things that are in there, okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Coles?
Thank you. You did a good job, Laura, for your first time through.
Thank you.
And this is a very complex budget, and I think you've been able to succinctly point out the changes over time that we've experienced this past year and in prior years, and it really is nice to be returning to a more stable budgeting process. And I agree with Councilmember Aguilara that we need to continue looking at ways to enhance our reserves, because even though we're coming out of recession, who knows when the next one might hit, because they do hit, and in the last one, we had to cut so many programs and positions that it really took a lot of the lifeblood out of our, of our city and our, some of our community programs. And at some point, now that we're in a, in a better mode looking into the future, it would be nice to, to look at the things that we did cut when we were using the meat axe to see whether or not there's anything we would want to consider restoring, or what levels we might restore anything to. I want to also thank, give my thanks to this council for giving you a set of goals and priorities as you prepared the budget, and you've done a good job of reflecting the council's direction and desire. And also, I think our community should be happy that we have a council that really does serve as a watchdog for our, our public funds. And, you know, the council asks the right questions, whether it's here in public or behind the scenes, to try to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck. So those are my comments, and again, thank you. I support this budget, and I'm anxious to approve it.
I do want to point out one thing, based on a comment you made, which is inside this budget, and in particular to the Recreation and Community Services side of the budget, we did cut a number of programs when we were going through the recession, and one of the things we're going to do over the course of this year is look at all of the programs that were eliminated and bring that back to you with the, we'll call it the draft budget overview, next fiscal year, to look at and to review and give us feedback on.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, for that comment, because that was where I was going with mine. First, thank you for the great job. All 353 pages were riveting. I read it repeatedly. I took notes. You did a great job, thank you. And I agree with Councilmember Coles that it is a testament to what the city has done, all the city staff, as well as the council, and the citizens of Vista, the residents that we have here, and the sacrifices that we've made to come out of this structural deficit and to deal the best we could with the recession that was thrust upon us through no fault of our own. But when we are looking at when we're able to restore some of the services that we've cut, my comment was going to be to look at some of the recreation services for our families and for our kids, because that was a huge, huge devastating loss to the community when we lost those programs. So that would be one of the places that I would like to look at in the future budgets. But because we're in a, in a really good spot, I don't want to run right out, and I don't have a hole burning in my pocket to say right now, so just, good job, thank you to everyone for, for doing this. We have a good budget ahead of us.
Well, I agree, good budget and nice job of presentation today for your first time.
Thank you.
So I guess, do we need a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the budget.
I'll second it.
It's just a receivable.
Oh, just a motion, receive and file?
Okay, the motion is to receive and file.
Second, or John's second?
John, did you want to say something?
No, I just, I meant to...
Second, or you're voting?
I'm voting.
Okay, cast your votes, please. Okay, that motion passes. The next thing on our agenda is our fiscal year 2013-14 third quarter financial report. So Neilson will be doing that for us.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Once again, my name is Dale Neilson. I'm the Director of Finance and City Treasurer for the City of Vista. Presented for you this evening is the third quarter financial report for the nine months ended March 31st, 2014. At this point in time, general fund revenues and expectant expenditures are all within budgetary expectations. Exhibit three, starting on page 11 of the report, provides budgetary and actual revenue information for the general fund as of March 31st. As of March 31st, the general fund has received about 69.5% of its total budgeted resources. Being under the 75% mark at this point in the year is not uncommon, because we do have several large revenue sources that we do not receive until the fourth quarter, such as our second big property tax allocation from the county that we receive in, in April. We have a VLF property tax payment that we'll receive in May, as well as a triple flip sales tax. Those two items by themselves total about $6 million. And our SDGNE franchise fee payment, that's about $900,000, we don't get that until April. A number of revenue items that we will receive in July and August this upcoming summer will also be accrued back into June, because that is the period in which the revenues were earned. Exhibit four, on pages 15 and 16, present a graphical representation of two of our largest revenue sources, property tax and sales tax. Right now, those graphs show that sales tax is about 1.5% ahead of budgetary expectation, and property tax is about 2% of the target, ahead of the target right now. Exhibit five, on page 17, provides similar information for general fund expenditures. These are at 63.3% of the total amount appropriated that has been spent thus far. There are a number of recommended operating budget adjustments at this time. All are funded by either an increase in revenue estimates or use of reserves. They have no negative impact on the estimated year-end general fund fund balance. Detailed discussion on these items can be found on exhibit two, which starts on page nine of the report. There's also a number of CIP budget adjustment recommendations that are due primarily, that are a result of the review of CIP projects that were done in anticipation of adopting this upcoming year's CIP, CIP Capital Improvement Program budget. The resolutions to adjust the operating and CIP budgets can be found on exhibits nine through 11. There's also one recommended personnel change, and discussion of that item can be found on exhibit 12, which is on page 29 of the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have any questions? See, then, do you need, it's just a discussion item, so I don't need a, see, no questions from?
Yes.
Okay, then I need a motion to receive and file, no?
I have what?
Oh, okay, there's a resolution, okay, so I do need a motion for the resolutions.
So I will move that we receive and file the fiscal year 2013-14 third quarter financial report, as well as, can I say, the resolutions as laid out in the staff report? Okay.
Have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes, please. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda, let's see, where are we here, is our Newspaper Street Vendor program. It's a discussion item, and who will take that? Holly Zimmerman is going to take that tonight, and Cheryl Mast.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Cheryl Mast will be providing the staff presentation, will be available for any questions.
Good evening, again, Mayor, council members. Over the past 20 years, Alpha Project has located and operated within Vista a nonprofit rehabilitation program providing treatment for homeless individuals and victims of substance abuse. Desiring to offer a working recovery program, early in its operations, Alpha Project formed a partnership with the North County Times. Free newspapers were provided to program participants, who were assigned to street corners at various intersections to sell newspapers. In 2012, the San Diego Union Tribune purchased the North County Times, continuing the Hawker program with the Alpha Project, although distribution days were decreased. Although newspaper hawkers are required to abide by traffic laws and safety guidelines, records show the City Council has discussed safety concerns on three occasions between 1997 and 2006, two of which related to hawkers entering the roadway and impeding traffic flow. The final discussion was a request to upgrade safety vests. At the April 8th meeting, the City Council directed staff to bring forward an agenda item to discuss the history and issues related to the newspaper street vendors. That concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, speakers, Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, and thank you for that report. I had requested this to come up, because there had been several complaints to me, and I don't know if my colleagues receive phone calls or emails as well, and also my own personal experience with, with the hawkers in the street. They don't necessarily stay on the median, they come out into the, the street, stand between the lanes of the cars moving, and when the light turns green, frequently won't get out of the road. They just say, "Go ahead, I won't let you run me over." That's, that can be stressful for some of the drivers. There is enough to think about when you're driving down the road without trying to avoid pedestrians who refuse to get out of the way. And I know that this has been discussed, not only in council meetings previously, but behind the scenes with people saying, "Hey, can you call and ask them to please not stand in the street, stay on the median?" They've become, some of them are very aggressive, and the term, somebody referred to, commented to me, called them stalker hawkers, because you tell them, "No, thank you, I don't want the newspaper," and they still bang on your window and stand in front of your car, and they don't, they don't get out of the way. I in no way want to take away options and opportunities for people who are trying to better themselves and have an opportunity to change their lives and, and earn money in the process. On the other hand, I don't want to see people standing in the middle of the street causing problems. And it was also commented that because of some of the aggressive behavior of a couple of the, the people who are on the street now, and I understand that they change out about every 12 weeks, because it is a three-phase consecutive program, and this is the first phase, and they change out about every 12 weeks, is my understanding. But someone had made a comment that they've noticed, when there are two turning lanes, people will tend to not get in the farthest left turning lane in an effort to avoid some of the, the behaviors, and that can cause some delays for traffic, for motorists. I, I can't say that I personally have seen that, it's just something that somebody had brought up. But I also want to recognize that it said in the staff report that they are advised that they need to adhere to laws regarding that, but we have an ordinance here in Vista, chapter 10.28, point 2020, says, "No person shall stand on a street or highway for the purpose of soliciting employment, business, or contributions from occupants of any vehicle." So, and there's no particular exemption for newspaper sellers to be wandering through the lanes of the roadways. So I'm not sure how we reconcile that, that's perhaps a sidebar, maybe not germane to the issue at hand, but I, I just wanted to bring this up and have this discussion, and I see that some of our neighboring cities have also had issues and brought this up, and, and had rules, A, they are not allowed at all, or B, that they are mandated that they have to stay on the median or the sidewalk unless it's directly to collect the fee after someone has waved and said, "Yes, thank you, I'd like the newspaper." It seems to me that we've had that discussion before with them, asking them to please stay on the sidewalk or the median, and, and we just keep going through this cycle over and over and over again. So I just brought it up, I wanted to have a discussion with council and staff, what can we do about it besides continually complain about the aggressive behavior of some of these gentlemen out there hawking newspapers? So I would like, perhaps, I don't know what, what stronger language, right now, are they mandated? Because our law says they can't be there at all. In their contract with the city, are they, is it stated they have to stay on the median, or they have to stay on the sidewalk? Does it say that they're permitted to be in the middle of the street? Can we elaborate on what that contract agreement is?
We don't, we don't have a formal contract with Alpha Project for them to sell newspapers or hawking newspapers within the right of way. There is no formal agreement, it's just been a practice that has been allowed for a period of time to support the program.
Would we be agreeable to saying we can't go out walking through the middle of the street, that you can sell your paper from the median or the sidewalk and only go collect money? I think San Marcos, that's what San Marcos has done. Maybe that's a place to start before we say, you know, take the next step of, "We really don't want this at all."
So that's a discussion for council, if you'd like to give us direction to work with Alpha Project on different ways for them to solicit the newspapers, we'd be happy to take that direction.
Do my council colleagues have any comments?
Councilmember Aguilara might, Deputy Mayor Aguilara might.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Personally, I, I haven't had any problems with the stalker hawkers, but, you know, I know that some people are less tolerant, I guess, about something like that. I mean, they're, you know, I usually just wave them off. I get the paper at home, so there's no reason for me to purchase a newspaper. But as far as keeping them on the median, it's going to be kind of hard to sell newspapers to that other lane when there's two or three lanes, so I don't know how you're going to keep them on the median. I think we probably need to take the approach of talking to Alpha Project and, and counseling them and try to let them know that there's, there's some issues with, I think it's got to be just certain people that are out there selling. I believe it's all, all men, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Never seen a woman.
Yeah, it's, I believe it's a men's program. So it's got to be just a couple of guys, I think, that are probably, you know, and, you know, I mean, at the same time, they're trying to make themselves better and trying to be responsible citizens here in our community, so I think we should give them the opportunity, but at the same time, we do need to listen to some of the... but at the same time, we do need to listen to some of the concerns that are out there. I think the first step we should do is just talk to Alpha Project, let them know that we're serious about, you know, them following some rules, and let's set some rules aside, or, or set some rules, as far as what they can and can't do. I mean, obviously, they should be out of the way when the light turns green. I mean, that's just a, a safety concern there, because people are in a hurry, and that's how people get hurt. But as far as crossing the road there, I think if you're going to have a newspaper hawker, they're going to have to cross the road at some point to collect money, to give a newspaper, and it's going to be really difficult to get people to pull to the median. I, I think you just have more problems if you get everybody trying to pull to the median to get their newspaper, so I think them scrambling around is probably not as big an issue, at least not to me. So, I'd love to hear from everybody else, that's just my opinion. And again, I've never had any issues with it, so maybe I'm less sensitive to it.
I, I've not had a problem with them either, I, I've never seen them knock on a window or anything, you know, but I, I don't, how do, how do you reconcile the ordinance, if we have an ordinance that says that, and, because also the firemen, we have the boot drive, so we have to be careful about what rules we make that would preclude them from their boot drive also. So, how do you reconcile the ordinance that we have that says they can't do it? We just ignore it?
We've turned a blind eye to it for the program, as well as allowing for something like fire department boot drive, which is different, it's, you know, one, one day out of the year.
Right.
Typically, they're not in the medians, they're on street corners, or they're within shopping centers, taking donations.
But they kind of do the same thing to get their money, so.
They do. It's one day a year, I would say that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I'm saying.
Technically, it might be the same, but we've turned a blind eye to this side of our ordinance, or this regulation, because the council has supported the, the program, so.
I would also say, the biggest challenge for Alpha Project is the, the turnover, which is part of the success of their program, is that people aren't doing the newspaper hawker portion of it for quite a long time, and all of a sudden, you have a new group. Their supervisors have always been extremely receptive to concerns from the community, concerns from the city, whenever we've heard of something, which has been just a handful in my 11 years here, I've brought it up with them, and they've immediately worked with that program participant to make sure they understand, and also responded back to the city, and, when possible, directly to the community member who brought it up, so that they can talk a little bit more about the program, understand any concerns, and make sure that, that they're doing their best to explain what's going on. So, we've had a good relationship with them on that front.
Okay, oh, Councilmember Coles.
Yes, like some of the others of you, I've, I've had no problems with it, and depending on what intersection you're at, and the configuration, the number of lanes, and so forth, some of the, some of the hawkers really do stay on the median, because that makes sense for them, and it's easy, easier for them to do their work. In the multi-lane intersections, they do, like you say, they do have to, to get out the, the key thing, as council or Deputy Mayor Aguilar mentioned, is that I do want them out of the roadway when the light turns green, because that is, if, if anybody does get frustrated, it's being a little nervous that they might hit somebody, and I, I haven't really seen that happen. I've been worried that it might happen, but I haven't seen anything of a close call. If, if somebody, do we have a, a point of contact? And I, I really don't want to formalize an agreement with, with this program, I'd rather leave it as it is, so that, that it doesn't become a city program. And, but if, if somebody does have a complaint, for example, if I were to get a call that they had a, a problem at, you know, Vista Way in Santa Fe, who, who should I have them call, or, or make a, a statement to? The mayor?
Personally, we'd like to hear it, and then we would directly provide that information to Alpha Project. You can always refer people to Alpha Project. The program supervisor is Robert Delisle, he has been with Alpha Project for a long time, and is understanding of those concerns.
Well, I, and I prefer to do that directly, I, I've never had somebody ask me to intervene or, or make a direct complaint to me, but if it did happen, I, I think I'd just.
We can provide you with the phone number, yeah, phone number, email address.
I don't need it unless I, unless I ask for it. But I, I, I do think it's good to just remind them that it came up as a council concern, and, when I see these men, who I know have come through some hard times, and they're, they're resocializing in a way, and they have a pretty friendly demeanor, I, I feel that there's something is working, because they're, they're showing some spunk and attention to getting to a, an early job, so to speak, and the, the reports from Alpha Project shows a degree of success, and I would hate to impede that.
Councilwoman, I, I actually only erased your name, your thing, so you're, you're next, and then.
Okay, thank you. Just to reiterate, requiring them to stay on the median, as it, what I said before, was venturing into traffic to collect their money. I'm not thinking people are going to be throwing coins as they drive by, no. So I, I understand that they would need to do that, and I too agree that Alpha Project is a great program, and they're doing a wonderful service for their, for their community. On the other hand, there are some aspects that, I see this as a public safety issue for them, as well as for the motorists. And I would like to see a little bit more restriction on what they can and cannot do. So, I, I would like, maybe if we could direct staff, or ask, I hate the word "direct," but ask staff nicely, to perhaps come up with some things that we could look into, perhaps mirroring what some of our neighboring communities have done. Because I don't want to eliminate the program completely, I'm not at that point yet, but we do seem to be having an ongoing conversation about the safety issue, and I think it's, it really needs to be addressed.
Deputy Mayor Aguilar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a suggestion. They wear vests, right, like safety vests? What if we had the phone number of whoever the contact person is at Alpha Project, you know, an 800 number, or whatever, it doesn't even have to, it could just be a local, and they're on their vest.
The sticker on the back of a truck, like my driving.
Yeah, and, and then a vendor number, vendor 283, you know, they don't have to have their name, or, I mean, if they want to put their first name, whatever, but, whatever they decide, but a way to identify each individual vendor, and then a number that the public can call, and let Alpha Project deal with it.
If council is interested, we will.
I think it's a great idea. I agree, I think that's a place to start.
I really don't want us to be undertaking the, the oversight of, of that, and that's a great suggestion, is to, to be able to let people call directly to the source.
But with restrictions of what they can and cannot do still in place, not just a phone number for people to call, but they need to know, you can't stand between the two lanes as the light turns green, saying, "It's okay, I won't let you hit me." Well, the way people are texting nowadays, I don't want to take that chance of the car over here coming into my lane, and somebody accidentally running somebody over. It hasn't happened in Vista, thank God, but it has happened, and I don't want it to happen in Vista. So I think that's a great idea, but I still would like to see some restriction.
So along with the vests, and the phone number, and the ID number, in terms of restrictions, how about we just say that if the council is amenable to allowing the program to stay, that they stay either on the median, or the street corner, and if they're going to take a solicitation, or they're going to take a donation for the paper, they go out, and they come back to that same median and street corner, and they don't walk through the middle of the lane. I think it's probably as simple as that, in terms of restrictions.
That's fine.
I'm agreeable to that.
Okay.
And, and actually, you know, in their defense, they've been doing this for, gosh, since I've been around, 19.
Yeah.
Hundred. And, and I've never heard of an accident, or anybody, you know, all, all those years, so, I'll speak on their defense a little bit. Okay, so do you need a motion for that?
No, I think we have direction.
Okay, okay. So we have that, so we have one thing, one other item, we have a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing, for the vacation of a portion of Tibodoro Road. So, does anybody want to speak on this issue, or do you, just to, anybody have any, do you want to report? I'm not seeing any heads shaking anywhere or another. Then I would.
Are there any public speakers?
No public speakers.
Okay. Well, then, I, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution.
Okay, we have motion in a second.
One second, sorry.
Cast your votes.
You can clear it, yeah, sorry.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. So then we have oral communications, and we have one oral communication here, Renee Glasfo. Shouldn't put the microphone, microphone right by your mouth, so we can hear you.
Good evening, mayors, mayor. Once again, music exchange, maestro and Chris, bicyclist from Alpha, and our Vista residents, motorists, cyclists, and pedestrian students are asking you to keep them safe. The escalating daily crime data on Vista, which includes alcohol, and 95 DUIs with 20 auto crashes with injuries on Highway 788, reported by Oceanside Police from January 1 through April 23, 2014, should be reason enough to stop any ABC license from coming to their family Vista Strawberry Festival, and future family downtown events, who has to keep them safe, which you have been. Thank you so much for your St. Patrick's Day Festival and parade, and your Cinco de Mayo at the Adobe, and the, and the Alta Vista Gardens Earth Day, thank you so much. Remember to honor the words in the, in the, the paper. Okay. Please keep in mind that the spring weather means more pedestrians and bicycles, especially children, are on our streets. Remember to please be aware of the spare, space around you, and to drive carefully. There are fine establishments in Vista for the adults who need to have an alcoholic beverage. And we want to thank so much for the Lions Club, participating in the Queens and Princess Event, it's beautiful. And please, we want to get rid of these kind of guys in our Vista, sober living, he was there for a few months, he came from Escondido in Vista, then he left Vista, and then that's when he did these horrible crimes. We want to keep our youth, everyone, safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you, do I have one more speaker? No speaker?
Yeah.
Okay, one more speaker?
Yeah.
Oh, only if the council doesn't mention it? Okay, Cliff, come on up. You can do the promo on it.
Good evening, council, just, this is going to be the last meeting before the Vista Strawberry Festival, so I want to make sure that word got out. On Sunday, May 26, the annual Vista Strawberry Festival, starting with the 5K run, the 10K run, and a whole day of festivities, festivities, carnival rides, Little Cupcake, or Strawberry Festival Girls, karaoke. The, the Strawberry Festival grows and grows each year, and this is going to be a dynamite event like it has been in the years past, so pass the word, tell your friends, bring your friends, let's bring people to Vista.
Thank you.
To clarify, that's Sunday, May 25, will be the Strawberry Festival, no.
Okay, and, and also, we might give a little promotion for Juice Newton, the night before, at the Moonlight, there's a little thing there, I don't know if we have anything on that in our things. I'll do, I'm going to do my, I'll do my comments first today. Okay, so, I want to do, let's see, I have several here. Oh, first off, I want to do congratulations to Assemblywoman Toni Atkins, she's, yesterday was sworn in as the Speaker of the Assembly, up in Sacramento, and she's the third woman and the first San Diego to hold a speakership, so that's, congratulations to her, that's, that's something really important for our, our county, to have her up there. The county is inviting residents to take an online survey, to tell them what you think the biggest man-made or natural threat is to Vista, and how prepared you are to deal with it. San Diego County is working with every local jurisdiction, including our Vista Fire Department, to set priorities for addressing potential disasters. You can find the survey on our city website, at cityofvista.com, so go on and, and take that, that survey, that's kind of interesting, it'll be interesting to find out what the results are. In advance of our summer season production of Monty Python Spamalot, everybody's invited to a free screening of Monty Python and the Holy Grail, it's on Friday, May 23, at 8:30 at the Moonlight Amphitheater. The Moonlight, movie is rated PG, and is produced in association with the Moonlight Cultural Foundation. And one more, the Wave Water Park opens Memorial Weekend on Saturday, May 24. The hours and events are posted at thewavewaterpark.com, and we just talked about the Strawberry Festival, so everybody, it'd be fun to, we'll all be down there, so it'll be fun, come down and visit the city booth, and, and some other booths. And then one, one sad thing I was going to say, that I, I have a friend that passed away on Mother's Day, is Donna Jowdy, I don't know how, how many of you know her, and then also Harris Chuck, we had two, we've been losing residents lately, so I just want to say, on a, on a sad note, we're going to miss both, both of those people in, in Vista. So I will go, I'll start with John, we'll go this way today.
I just had one announcement, had the opportunity to go down to Sandag last week, and fill in for the mayor, and just make an announcement that we voted on expanding the trolley from downtown, up to the UCSD area, the VA Hospital, and throughout UTC there. It's going to be a very nice project, they claim it'll be done by 2018, so 1.7 billion dollar project funded by Sandag, but it's going to be a nice project. It's going to take people from downtown, like I said, all the way up the 5, cross over the 5, to the, one of the malls there at the UTC area, to the hospital, to UCSD, and then to Scripps Hospital, and then coming back down south, so it's a great project, and thank you for the opportunity to sit in the Sandag meeting.
Yes, it was an important meeting, so thank you for going. Councilwoman Campbell?
No comments this evening.
Councilmember Coles?
If we keep this 100-degree weather, we might want to open the wave a little earlier.
It is so hot.
Yeah, the only comment I make, I would like to make, is that the Boys and Girls Club Diamond Ball is this Saturday here at the Morris Vents Room, if anybody, I hope some of you can plan to go and support the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, I just had a couple of questions. First of all, I got a phone call today from a resident over in the Shatter Ridge area regarding the stop sign, and it's going to be on the agenda for the 27th, and they wanted to know, there's a group of people, because that's Memorial Day weekend, they're not going to be back yet, and they want to speak to the issue, and they wanted to know if we could move it to a different day, just putting that out there, letting you know I got that phone call. The second thing I, I wanted to ask, why was Item D4 regarding the disabled icon removed from the agenda?
Item D4 was removed because, under the rules of the U.S. Department of Justice, which administers all of the ADA, under Section 703.7.2.1, the international symbol of accessibility for handicap marking shall comply with that figure. They do not provide for any alternative figures under the federal rules, and the concern is that, were we to make a change, we might be subject to what has been, come to be known as the drive-by disability advocate lawsuit.
Yes, that, we don't want that.
Yeah, no, I agree, we don't want that.
Until such time as the federal government acts to provide some alternatives, which is likely, because they're very tied into the disabled community, we recommend that we hold off until we have some official sanction for that particular sign.
So those rules don't mandate federal property only?
No, no, those are national rules that apply to the Americans with Disability Act, they govern all of our ADA requirements.
Actually, international, didn't it say?
For this building, or sidewalks, curb cuts, everything.
It said on there, it was an international law, that was international symbol.
It is an international symbol, it's recognized internationally, that one symbol is recognized internationally.
It was actually in Puerto Vallarta, when I was just down there, I saw it down there.
Okay, thank you, I have nothing else.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned at 7:20. Nope.
Couple comments, Mary.
Oh, I forgot, Patrick.
Before you adjourn.
We're unadjourned, and now we're back in session.
Thank you, just a couple of updates.
Sorry.
No problem. Just wanted to let everybody know that on Memorial Day, May 26, the American Legion and Veterans of Foreign Wars are once again going to be having their Memorial Day celebration here, at the Civic Center, which is going to be off the Alta Vista.
at the Civic Center, which is going to be off the Alta Vista parking lot. That'll be at 10:00 AM, it'll go to 11:30 PM, and this will be the third year that they've done it here. And in speaking of Memorial Day, city offices, as well as the library, will be closed, and trash pickup will be delayed by one day. And two more items, wanted to let you know that as we move into summer, similar to what we did for our 50th anniversary last year, we are going to have movies in the park again. And so on the website, we have all the information, we're also going to end with a summer fun fest prior to the movie. So on June 21, we'll be showing Frozen at the Buena Vista Ballfields. On July 19, we'll be showing Despicable Me at the Sports Park, Despicable Me 2, sorry. And on August 9, at Bringle Terrace, we will do the Family Fun Fest, which will feature activities for kids, like the bounce houses, games, activities provided by our rec staff, and live entertainment, as well as showing the Lego Movie, finishing that up. So please check the website for more information. And I want to let you know that currently, I think there's two fires burning in the county right now. The biggest of the fires, I think, is the Bernardo Fire. We have a strike team there, which includes an engine and a battalion chief, and so our fire department is monitoring those closely, to make sure that Vista is safe and secure, as well as making sure there's no fires, or if there are fires, we need resources in Vista. So just wanted to give you a heads up.
Do I have the attorney have anything to say? I've covered everybody else, the city clerk, is anybody down there? Okay, with that, now we're adjourned at 7:20, no, 7:22.